Today is December 4, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. This is the planning and zoning meeting of the city of Boca Raton. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Karen.
Sarah?
It's Karen.
Karen, please call the roll.
Certainly. Chair Seville?
Here.
Les Matthews?
Here.
Ms. McDermid? Mr. Mitchell?
Present.
Mr. Morgan? Mr. Dornblazer?
Here.
And Mr. Maribel?
Present.
Thank you. You do have a call, sir.
Thank you. Okay, the first order of business tonight is to elect some officers. I'd like to start by nominating Tim Dornblazer to be vice chair. I would look for a motion and a second.
So motioned.
Second.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I didn't get who's seconded. Oh. McDermid and motion by Mr. Mitchell. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? You're now vice chair. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have secretary, which is a very important position, and no secretarial work. I'd like to nominate Mr. Greg Mitchell for that position. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're in.
Thank you.
Close vote.
Congratulations.
Right. Okay. Okay. We don't have any amendments to the agenda tonight. We have minutes from the November 6, 2025 meeting. Look for a motion and a second for approval.
Motion to approve.
So seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes pass. Next item is the quasi judicial related public hearing. I would ask the city attorney to explain that procedure.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. Christopher Fernandez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. The rules of the city council provide that each applicant requesting approval, relief, or other action from the planning and zoning board this evening shall disclose at the commencement of the public hearing any consideration or payment provided or committed directly or on its behalf for an agreement to support or withhold objection to the requested relief or action. A copy of the quasi judicial rules governing tonight's public hearing are attached to the agenda and are available from the city clerk.
Thank you. Would anybody that's going to speak on the item tonight please stand up and be sworn in?
Do you want me? Okay. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth? Thank you. You may be seated.
Karen, would you make a note that Mr. Morgan is here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. First and only item on the agenda tonight is the Boca Raton golf maintenance building at 501 East Camino Real. I would ask Karen to please read that into the record.
Final action by the planning and zoning board regarding a resolution of the planning and zoning board of the city of Boca Raton considering for the Boca Raton Resort and Club generally located 501 East Camino Real, site plan approval to authorize construction of an approximately 19,320 square foot, one-story golf maintenance facility with a maximum height of 25 feet and related site improvements, including construction of new parking spaces and reconfiguration of an internal street, and considering the abandonment of a portion of a 12-foot utility easement providing for repealer, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Has anybody had any ex parte communications? Well, I did. I spoke to Christina Belenky.
I did as well.
I did, okay. Thank you. Okay. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Owen Devlin to make his presentation for the city.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and board members, and welcome new board members. My name is Owen Devlin, Senior Planner with Development Services, and I'm here to present an application for a site plan approval and easement abandonment for a proposed golf maintenance facility that's located at 501 East Camino Real. Boca owner LLC, the applicant, owner of the property generally located at 501 East Camino Real, is seeking site plan approval for the construction of a one-story golf maintenance facility. The project also includes related site improvements and the abandonment of a portion of a 12-foot utility easement. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to redevelop a 2.7 acre portion of the property to construct a one-story, approximately 19,320 square foot golf maintenance facility. A new parking lot will also be provided with 28 spaces along with a designated outdoor drop-off and vehicle maintenance area. With the application, there will be landscape and hardscape improvements provided, which include the reconfiguration of an existing private street that is internal to the Boca Resort or the Boca Raton, along with the installation of a new sidewalk and street trees along the newly configured street. The applicant is requesting the abandonment of a portion of a 12-foot utility easement that contains active lines. This section is highlighted on the screen as the hatched area. The easement is currently located where the proposed golf maintenance building will be This application will not lead to increase in onsite activity. There will be no additional vehicle trips or changes to the required parking. The golf maintenance building is simply being relocated from one area to site to another. Additionally, the application includes a new sidewalk along Southwest Fifth Street, which will feature both street trees and shade trees. Development Service Department have determined that the site plan approval meets all the applicable criteria. The community appearance board at September 9 meeting recommended approval with minor conditions with a vote of six to zero. All conditions were addressed by the applicant, and the Development Services Department recommends approval of this application.
Okay.
That ends my presentation, and if any additional questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions to Mr. Devlin? Anybody?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask the petitioner to come up and make her presentation.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Christina Belenky of Miskell Bachman, and it is a pleasure to be here before you this evening on behalf of the Boca Raton. So Mr. Devlin went through a lot of the presentation details already, or the specific project details, but big picture, stepping back a little bit. When Boca owner LLC, the MSD Foundation, acquired this property about seven or so years ago, they did so with the intent to really make a significant investment into the property, really wanting to bring it back to the gem of Boca Raton that it once was. So throughout the last seven or so years, they've been working on multiple projects throughout the resort. When COVID hit, we had several applications in the door, and they single-handedly kept me busy throughout COVID when everything else was shutting down. And as a result of that, you see the new pool club and amenity area that is in the location where the great hall was previously located. You see where Sidell's is. There's a new expansive glass area that is included within that restaurant. They've invested significant money and funds into the rooms, and they're not stopping here. Coming up on agendas, you'll see more projects coming to the resort to really, again, bring it back to the luxury facility or the luxury resort that is renowned on the world scale. Sorry. So with that, there will be modifications to the golf course. There will be other amenities. There will be a residential project. And with all of those moving pieces, the ownership group really looks at every detail of the resort from an operational perspective, from an aesthetics perspective, to really figure out how the puzzle pieces best fit together, not only for operations, but for their members, for their guests, for the experience as a whole. And so part of that is the simple relocation of the golf maintenance facility. So it is located currently kind of central to the golf course area along Meisner Village Drive. And so we are proposing to shift that kind of in a back of house area where you have the employee parking garage currently, and that's identified kind of by that circle where it says golf maintenance on the screen. So you see the existing parking garage. Again, we're proposing about a 19,000 square foot, one-story facility. And so everything related to maintenance will be enclosed within that facility, storage of materials, vehicles, equipment, that kind of thing will be internal and screened from view. There will be 28 surface parking spaces that are added to replace 28 spaces that are being removed, so essentially just being relocated. And the only exception is kind of where you see that circular drive. That will be a landscape debris area. So if a palm frond falls on the golf course, a maintenance vehicle will come around and put that into that landscape debris area where it can be easily picked up and taken away at a later date. That area will be heavily screened as well. So again, nobody's seeing these areas when they're driving from any angle around the property. It's really thought through in a holistic level. And so new landscaping includes new live oak, green buttonwoods, arica palms to provide some of that screening, royal and cabbage palms, accent plants, that's all in the materials package that you have. And then here are just a handful of elevations to really show how it seamlessly fits in with the existing garage there. Again, we're not intending this to look like a maintenance facility. It's not, you know, a warehouse that you would see in other locations. It's really intended to tie into the rest of the resort so that you don't know really what operationally is behind there. Again, Mr. Devlin touched on the easement to be vacated. Water service will still be provided, and new easements will be provided as needed. And that's really it. So we're happy to be here, and our team can answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I have a quick question, just, first of all, I like the design and creativity as an operations person and figuring, you know, everything out like that. Just one question. The building that it's going to be going into, is that, are we expanding the building footprint, or is that, it's just staying the same size?
So it's a new building. It's 19,000 square feet. That's located essentially adjacent to the garage, so it almost looks like it's connected to the garage, but it is a new building.
I thought you said it was in the employee garage. I'm sorry. I misheard you. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. McDermid?
And the only residential neighbors nearby, you all engaged with them, and they're on board with this?
Yes, we have had numerous discussions with Meisner Grand, which is the community most, I guess, in closest proximity to the garage. We had a different project slated for this area originally, shifted things over again looking at the operations and have their support.
Based on recent issues, is this going to affect flooding in any way if you're getting rid of green space?
It is not intended to impact flooding. Drainage has all been accounted for. That's going through the PWR process. I think we've actually been in that process for some time, so the city engineers have been reviewing that to ensure there's no drainage issues.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a public hearing. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion and a second for approval.
So motioned.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Karen, please call the roll. Yes.
Mr. Dornblazer?
Yes.
Your mic?
Yes.
Forgive me. For the record, Mr. Morgan and Dornblazer were both in favor. Ms. McDermid? Yes. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And Mr. Maribel?
Yes.
Yes, and Chair Seville?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Any public requests, anyone here from the public wishing to speak on any item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Director?
I have no report.
No report. Okay. The chair's report is I'd just like to welcome our, officially welcome our two new members, Mr. Maribel and Mr. Matthews, and great to have you join us. Okay. With that, anybody else have any other business they want to?
I do. Do we know exactly what we're voting on at the next meeting?
What do you mean exactly?
It's a pretty simple word, exactly.
I know. What? I mean, are we voting on, what is coming before the board that day?
It's going to be a lease agreement for a little less than eight acres downtown to the, you know, it's city-owned land, obviously. Beyond that, I mean, what kind of?
Will we receive copies of the actual lease, or is it just approving it in concept?
We will receive copies of the actual draft lease in the agenda package.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Brett.
Thank you.
And I do have one other comment.
Yes.
Do you have to only have an M in your name to join the board?
Yeah. That's interesting. Yeah. Yeah. That's a new requirement.
The last five people at the door have all had that.
M's are now a majority. Yeah. Yeah. We got one, two, three?
Five.
Five. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Dornblazer, you may have to change your last name.
Yeah, right.
Nick Dornblazer.
I'll do that. Anybody else have anything they would like to mention, discuss, or anything? If not, at 6:17, we are adjourned. If not, at 6:17, we are adjourned.